Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I would call to order the 228 Brookfield Town Meeting. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us observe a moment of silence for the various townspeople who died in the last year, for our servicemen who may still be overseas, and for the people fighting for freedom in the Upright. Thank you. This time we'll introduce the selectmen. Brian Robeshaugh is the chair. Rick Zachar. And Rick Sarette. Do we have new town residents here? If so, would you please stand and tell us your name and address.
Hello, Caitlin Stewart, 74, Robert Grove. I'm like a returning town resident, I wasn't there, but I just...
Caitlin, we're glad to have you down. Is there anyone present who is not a registered voter? If so, I will remind you that it's a misdemeanor if you attempt to vote. I'm not aware of any announcements. If anyone has an announcement, this should be the time to make. I'm going to say that. The rules for the town meeting are printed in the inside front cover of the town report. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to dispense from the reading of the rules.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion carries. We'll now announce the results of the town elections. For selectmen, Brian Robeshaugh received 96 votes. Mark Stengel received 14 votes. Ed Gockeau received 25 votes. I declare Brian Robeshaugh the winner. For trustee and trust fund, Meg Engels wins a plurality with 16 write-in votes. I declare her the winner. For cemetery trustee, Kate Nguyen-House received 52 votes. Candela Shuffington received 47 votes. Mark Stengel received 30 votes. I declare Kate Nguyen-House the winner. For moderator, Rose Zachar received eight write-in votes and I declare her the winner. For planning board, Carrie Ward received 221 votes. And Carrie, I hope I don't butcher your last name, I'm sorry. Carrie McManteray received, is that right? Very good. 15 write-in votes and I declare them the winners. For tax collectors, Diana Heckman received 134 votes. I declare her the winner. For town clerk, Karen Supercheck received 140 votes. I declare her the winner. For treasurer, Joanne Dolberg received 120 votes. I declare her the winner. And for supervisor of the checklist, Mary Ann Lynch received 14 write-in votes and I declare her the winner. After the town meeting, I would request that all those who were elected on leave with the clerk, so that we can swear in the new law. For the warrant articles, Article 2 passes with 124 yeses and 23 noes. Article 3 passes with 180 yeses and 36 noes. And Article 4 passes with 117 yeses and 19 noes. At this time, we'll begin the town board with Article number five. Article five is to see if the town will designate the selectmen as agents to expend funds from the common expendable trust account, part of town building office equipment. Selectmen, Zachar, I understand you have a motion.
Yes, I'd like to motion, make a motion that we table this warrant article.
Thank you. Is there a second for them?
There's a second.
Thank you. Would you like to explain why we are doing this?
Yes. Upon further investigation, after the law was created, we found that at the March 14th, 2006 town meeting, when this fund was created, as part of that motion, the selectmen were made agents to expend. So it's just a redundant, unnecessary warrant article.
Very good. Tabling motions are not debatable. Are you all ready for the question? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion, the warrant article is laid upon the table. Number six, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the additional sum of $1,000 for the annual salary of the town clerk. The current salary is $14,000. This would raise the annual salary to $15,000. Rick, do you wish to make that as a motion?
I do.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there discussion?
I'd like to discuss it.
I will give the person debating the motion first opportunity, and I will give you the second one here.
Go ahead.
The raise for the clerk to $15,000 is in line with money being given to town clerks all over the state. And it just puts it more in line with salaries that are given to this position. It's still below the poverty level, and it's more or less a stipend for a volunteer, in my opinion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the article, to seek the town will raise and appropriate the additional sum of $2,500 for the annual salary of town clerk. The current salary is $14,000. This would raise the annual salary to $16,500. I just have felt for years that the number of hours worked in that office, the salary should be in accordance with the number of hours worked.
The motion is in order, and now I have paper copy compared to the rules. Is there a second for the amendment? Thank you. We will now discuss the amendment. You can take it.
You know, there's a new town clerk, and I know that she's probably, we spent a lot of extra hours in there this year. We have the midterm election coming up, and it's going to be absolutely critical. It's been requiring a lot of extra hours. I also looked at salaries in the state, and as Mr. Sarette said, we're at the poverty level, I really do think that looking at other town clerks in the state, she's probably on that.
Is there further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
The moderator is unsure. All those who are in favor of the amendment, please raise their hands. You sure mean not to nod, because not the town will nod. They don't start over. Nineteen are in favor of the amendment. All those opposed to the amendment, please raise their hands. I see nine hands, ten hands. Amendment is adopted. All those in favor, what further discussion on the warrant article as amended? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion carries. The next warrant article is number seven, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the additional sum of $1,000 for the annual salary of town tax collector. The current salary is $14,000. This would raise the annual salary to $15,000. Rick, do you wish to make that as a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. Again, as before, the raise of $1,000 is to bring the tax collector up more in line with some of the tax, the tax collectors that are in the state. And again, I'll mention that these are still poverty wages, and it's more or less a stipend for volunteers, and that's how this town has been running for so long. People that give their time for small amounts a month allows us to pay for bigger things like schools.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we, I have to rip it down, so I'll get some help over there, Virginia. I'd like to make a motion that we increase to $2,000 to take the total salary up to $15,000 to be consistent with the town clerk. In the past, we've always tried to keep the salary of our volunteers, if you will, the same. I don't think it's wise to start differentiating between, well, this job needs an extra thousand for both this one or opposed to that one. I'd like to make a motion that we amend that. And I could take Virginia, the one you just had, Virginia, and read that and make the words "tax collector." Can you do that for me?
We can do that for you, but the one we have in writing was to raise it by $2,500, and you just said $2,000, which is why we ask for amendments in writing.
Then I have to stand corrected, I want the word, I want it won't be paid the same. So what?
I will ask the clerk to read the amendment changing the title of the office.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
To see if the town will raise and appropriate the additional sum of $2,500 for the annual salary of the tax collector. The current salary is $14,000. This would raise the annual salary to $16,500.
Is there a second for the amendment? Second, I repeat. We're now discussing the amendment. Is there any discussion? Over here.
Yes, Rose Zachar, I think I heard Virginia just say $16,500 or $15,700. Did I miss hear the number?
She may have missed her, the number, the intent of the selectmen was to make it so that this office will be paid, same as what the town just adopted for town clerk, which was $16,500.
So I think the intended increase is actually $3,500, correct?
No. The current salary is $14,000, and if we increase it by $2,500, it comes to $16,500.
Okay, I stand corrected, thank you.
Very good. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The amendment is adopted. We're now discussing the warrant article as amended. Is there any further discussion? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The amended warrant article is adopted. The next warrant article is number eight, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the additional sum of $2,500 for the annual salary of town treasurer. The current salary is $12,500. This would raise the annual salary to $15,000. Brian, I understand you wish to make that as a motion?
Yes, I do.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Very good. Is there any discussion on this warrant? You may.
The treasurer is commercially with, it's a tax collector clerk. She wears multiple hats during the year, from bookkeeper to treasurer to DRA person, insurance, social security, taxes. It's a game of what she needs to know if she has her cop, as Mary Lou has done it impactively, and I think our new treasurer is going to do just as well. So right now, being one of the lower paid, we had to increase it to $2,500. I guess I'm going to be in the same boat, and I would like to keep the salaries commensurate amongst the three elected officials, and I would look to make that additional sum 4,000 even. So I guess that would be another amendment that I didn't have already. I apologize, I wasn't expecting this, but that's where I'm going to be going. I think the salaries should be equal. Everyone has their area of expertise, and their area of expertise is crucial to out of the town.
Okay, we'll make sure that you get a piece of paper and get it to us in writing prior to the end of the meeting. But I will continue to move on with that because the numbers are straightforward. You want to increase the salary by $4,000 to $16,500. Is there a second on the amendment?
Sir.
Is there discussion on the amendment? Seeing none? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? The amendment is adopted. Is there discussion on the warrant article as amended?
I'm generally in favor of this, because our town treasurer does do so much, but for other towns of our size with a municipal operating budget in the realm of a million bucks, that's where we're going to be this today, guys, we're putting a million bucks here tonight, is that town treasurers, the most is Piermont pays $9,800. But more than likely, these other towns, some of the towns only, Goshen only pays $3,000 to the treasurer. More than likely, they have a staff position of bookkeeper, or they have a selectmen's admin do bookkeeping and run payroll. Here in Brookfield, we have our treasurer do all. Under the RSA, the treasurer does not have a lot of responsibilities they have to do as treasurer. We're asking our treasurer to do all this other stuff, too. We're putting all of that administrative work in one person, which leaves us, from a management point of view, the town management exposed. So I would request, I am, I'm going to support it, but I would request once again, I think I've done it before, is that during this year, the new treasurer will work with the selectmen and consider offloading some of those responsibilities onto another staff position of bookkeeper. So that way, we've got two people that know what's going on, and two people that can pay the bills, and all that, back each other up and all that kind of good stuff. Also, in these other towns, two of these other towns also have budget committees, which I'm going to talk about a little bit later today, that do the most of the budget work. In Brookfield, our town treasurer does a lot of the work as part of varying budgets. So I'm in favor, but I think that as we grow and continue to grow, and our budget continues to grow, I think we want to look at this, what we're doing here, asking one person to do what's an awful lot of work. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Frank Treasurer. I will remind people that we like people to introduce themselves when they stand up, because not everybody in this room necessarily knows who you are. So I will thank you for doing that, and I will ask you a question. I believe what you're saying is that segregation of duties is excellent for transparency. Is that not correct? Thank you. Mary Lou.
The only thing I would like to just amend from what Frank said is that you're...
Mary Lou, would you tell the town who you are?
Oh, my name! Mary Lou McLean. I live on 9 Tibbetum Road, and I am the current, well, as of last week, the current treasurer. I appreciate what Frank has said, but I don't appreciate, I want to just amend the fact that really the selectmen do a bulk of the proposed budget work. I put the numbers on the spreadsheet and in the computer, but they really are the ones that guide it. So, thank you.
Your comment that there are more than one set of eyes looking at the numbers is the most appreciated by the selectmen in the board. Is there any other comment?
I'm trying to stand up. Martha, I'm just covering this room. I have a question, just because I used to do positions of vice president, and I'd like to know, it seems so, I don't, it seems the responsibility is, I feel, illegal, how about the hours? And the town clerk, to me, puts in more hours than anybody, but I really think that about the others. So if you could give some information on that, you would have to justify, in my mind, whether there should be a legal pay.
Thank you for that question. I think it's an excellent question. One of the selectmen would like to comment on the number of hours put in by the various town officials.
I'll take it. I don't think we have an exact study. I think everyone has your busy time of year. I mean, clerk obviously has more even flow with office hours during the weeks and months. I was, I, you, tax collector, twice a year, they're very busy getting bills out, getting money in, keeping things balanced. Again, she keeps pretty good office hours as well. The treasurer, I would say, it's very up and down. This forms, the DRA requires, budget season, constant processing of checks, taxes, question naires from federal government are being filled out, questionnaires from primary charter. So I would argue that maybe the hours, if we do a study, I would think the hours are going to be commensurate. Maybe one might have to be a little bit more so than the other, but I would all, I would argue that it's not just the hours, it's the expertise in each job that we really, we are really looking to pay for. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? At this time, we are still debating the amendment to this warrant article, warrant article eight. If there's no further comments, are you ready for the question? Those in favor of the amendment to raise the salary by $4,000 to $16,500, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
The motion carries. Is there discussion about the warrant article now that we have amended? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
The warrant article passes as amended. Number nine, to see if the town will vote to increase the hourly salary for supervisors of the checklist from $16 per hour to $18 per hour. Brian, do you wish to make that as a motion?
Yes, I do.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Is there a discussion on this warrant article?
Would you go, I have an amended warrant article that she had up there?
Then why don't you read what you would like the motion to make, and that will be the motion?
So Article number nine, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the additional sum of $1,000 to increase the hourly salary rate for the supervisors of the checklist from $16 per hour to $18 per hour. Majority vote will be required. Selectmen do recommend this appropriation.
The warrant articles as posted do not need to be identical to the motions made by the selectmen, so we will accept that as what we are voting on at this point. Was it second?
Yes.
Is there further discussion?
If I could talk more. The whole reason we needed to amend that, the DRA, after the fact, said that they wanted a, an approximate sum, that that would be budgeted for. We thought the hourly rate transition was transparent enough. DRA requested at least an approximate number, need $1,000 for additional work, would be part of the warrant article. That's why that's changed.
It's always good to keep DRA happy.
Yes, I do.
Any further discussion on this warrant? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? The warrant article passes. Number 10. And before I read it, Rick, I'm going to ask if you have a different way of putting this one.
Yes.
Then please tell us how you'd like to make the motion.
Can I read it, and then amend this?
You could just read it as amended, because you're in charge of how you want to make your motion.
So again, the, this is another amended article. It's including wording for DRA. So number 10 will read, "To see if the town will raise and appropriate the additional sum of $1,000 to increase the hourly salary rate for the moderator as an elected official from $15,50 per hour to $20 per hour. Majority vote required. The selectmen recommend this appropriation."
Very good. Is there a second for them?
Sir.
Thank you, Frank. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? The motion is adopted. Warrant article passed. All right. Number 11. No more curveballs for me, right? Number 11, "See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to deposit into the Moose Mountain Capital Reserve Fund." Rose, it's more. Rick, I understand you wish to make that as a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
You wish to discuss it?
Yes, again, the Moose Mountain Capital Reserve Fund, Moose Mountain Bridge, continues. We, we had got estimates to, we pray replace the Moose Mountain Bridge several years ago because it's on the red list, the state red list, to the tune of almost $400,000, an open ended. And we, we put that on hold, and we tried everything we could to get that cost down. We did get some interesting estimates for much lower prices. So we had some people come in and look at the bridge, and they verbally quoted some very attractive low prices that would fix this bridge. There's new construction that they do where they put a bridge over the bridge and don't even touch it. And then there's that, we don't touch the water that way, and it helps us, it helps us alleviate some of the water permits, EPA permits, et cetera. So they came out to look at it, and they went back, and they sent us a written estimate, and it was back up to $300,000. That's what people are paying for these type bridges now. So we don't have that money in the capital reserve, so in the tradition of how we do things around here, we want to start saving up for a new bridge. In the event that the bridge did fail, we'd have to, no choice but to go to a bond to fix the bridge in that situation. The bridge is solid. It's a big chunk of concrete. When it goes on the red list, it is, it goes through a criteria checklist that certain things, it's a point system, things that are wrong, they find in the bridge, and we fall below the line, it's on the red list. But it's nonetheless a safe bridge at this time, but we still have to address it. So putting $50,000 into the reserve fund starts on track of saving for the bridge to avoid getting a bond for the bridge. In the meantime, we've just learned that there could be some grant money out there that could help us, and we are going to pursue that as well. But right now, we can't count on things we don't know about. We want to save up for a bridge. That's $50,000 appropriate.
I think it's $50,000.
Fifty. That's what it is. Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion about the bridge? Go ahead.
Just to piggyback on what Rick was saying, we currently have $145,000 saved for the bridge project. We've been hitting it little by little. We even appropriated some funds from an old trust account that was there for highway equipment. We converted that into a, the bridge trust account. So currently we have 145. If we do get this 50, we're 190 getting close to that 200 mark. So, you know, with the three years of figure that Rick's been quoted, we're still anticipating kindness, so even at the 200, we're still not there. So, you know, right now, the 50 is a chunk of money for this town, so if it's going to get us closer to that mark, maybe by next year, we'll be getting to the point where we want to start considering signing contracts. Thank you.
Can I have one more question?
Go ahead.
Uh, also, if anybody wants to see this type of bridge and the repair that it is, at the end of Butch Trot Road down by the main border on the canal, they, they did one of these installations. So go down and take a look at it and you'll know exactly what we're talking about for a bridge repair.
Any further discussion? Frank Fraser, Lifeford Road. So if we pass both of these today and put the money in, when do you propose to actually put the new bridge in? Because inflation is just going to make this thing more expensive. If we just let it keep going and build. You think you'll be able to do it this, do we have enough money to do it this year or do we have to wait a couple more years?
Couple more years.
So, you know, we might, this town consider just biting the bullet and putting enough money in and getting it done. Because this has been hanging on. I have one more quick point. I just want to clarify, that bridge is currently not covered on our insurance policy. Is that correct? This is a red tag bridge? So if something were to happen catastrophic to a town, could have incurred liability to business that, correct, without insurance coverage? Just so the town's aware of the fact. We're uninsured for that. Thank you. Over here.
Third question, Mark. So on this one, we're doing $50,000. Just to clarify, on the next one, we've got $75,000 for road repair challenge separate.
The next one for paving.
Paving projects. I know the trust funds are, the titles on the trust funds are confusing. Trust me, I know that. But when we talk to the next one, we're talking blacktop.
Alright, so just one other question. So then the third one down was $100,000 for town roads, so not sure what's.
Uh, over, over.
Okay.
They're, they're different items. I'm forgetting. Any other discussion? Over here. Very worth, Swoop Pond Road. Oh, did I? Thirty-two years been there, you know.
Anyway, uh,
Uh, that is, the infrastructure bill that we just passed, is there any chance we're going to be able to get some of those funds? Is anybody built into it? I mean, that's an ideal situation for the use of that as a. That would seem to me to be an excellent question. Does the selectman wish to respond?
That's, that's the, the grant money that we were talking about.
Oh, okay.
We're going to look into it.
Alright. Thank you. Very good. Any further discussion?
I, let me make a comment on the grant money. We have to be a little careful. Once we start taking federal funds, we have to abide by federal regs on the structure itself. And the last time we revisited this, if we took federal funds, it would boost the town upwards of $700,000 for the bridge. Yes, we'd get $2 million, but out of pocket, it would be $700,000. So we have to be very careful when we take grant money to make sure we understand what conditions are associated with that grant.
So that's what we can do.
Any further discussion on the warrant? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Warrant article adopted. Number 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to be deposited into the Road and Bridge Capital Reserve Fund. Rich, I believe you wish to make that as a motion.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, and Rich, would you like to speak to that and explain the difference between that and prior ones?
Yes, subtle, subtle differences in the name of our trust funds. Really someday we should clean them all up so they're very clear. Uh, this, this one is called the Bridge Repair Capital Reserve Fund. The earlier one was the Moose Mountain Capital Reserve Fund One, two different funds. This fund is for blacktop, for paving only. And the key words here, $75,000 to be deposited. So what this says is we're taking $75,000 and putting it into the bank so that in the future, and we'll talk about that in the next warrant article, in the future, we can take money out to pave roads in town. So what this is all about is putting $75,000 into the bank so that we can pave a road in the future to be deposited into the fund.
Very good. Is there further discussion on this article?
If I could again, um, just to go to what our current balance in our Road and Bridge Capital Reserve Fund is carving 123.9. So we're looking to make it around 200 grand with a $75 of influx. So that's just a little more information.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion on this warrant article? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The warrant article is adopted. Number 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 for the major repair of town roads. And to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of said sum from the Road and Bridge Capital Reserve Fund. Rich, I understand you wish to make that as a motion.
I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, so this, you might say, why do we put 75 in and then take 100 out? If we elect for whatever reason not to pave, we wouldn't pull the money out, but we would have the 75 in the bank for a future use. So what this says is our plans are to take $100,000 withdrawal from that trust fund. So Brian just said there'll be 200 in there. We'll take 100 out to pave roads this year. With the price of material, I don't know how much we could pay for $100,000, but when we put the budget together, we thought we hit a reasonable shot at bits of paving. But we'll see. As we get closer to spring, we get some real prices. We're, we're asking for authorization to take $100,000 out to pave a portion of a town road.
Is there further discussion? Over here. Uh, Mark Stengel, County Drive. What roads are used lately?
I'm sure you, a whole host of candidates. We've got Garnet, we've got Moose, we've got, we've got Roberts Road. And we'll take a look at which roads need it worst, need it, need it the most, and how many people use the road, and make that decision in the spring.
Over here.
Giggling, this is Golden Road. Um, a lot of candidates, a lot of roads identified, but are any of them critical that have to happen this year? Um, I, uh, I think that we, since we have 109, 16, and 28 highways nearby, um, and we have a very small tax base. Um, I was perfectly happy as a kid with oil dirt roads. So, um, so is there, you named a bunch of potential candidates, but you didn't say anything was critical that had to happen this year. So are all of those critical?
Well, history, history. Few years back, actually before this board was the board, we postponed doing maintenance every year. And the roads got really, really bad and it was very difficult to catch up. So the philosophy is to keep nibbling away at it and when we're done, we'll have to start over again because these are old country roads. And, and the base doesn't go down very far. You know, so to rebuild them, you're talking a lot of money. We go down, we go down about four or five inches, regrind it, put some new base in and then put a top one. We don't get out in eight inches.
Giggling, again. So when you're in, where we have rebuilt, the road's quite nice. I love the stone. It came out nice years ago and, you know, a little work that was done. Um, so are, is the intention for rebuilding or just laying some blacktop on it?
Well, we wanted to add about four years footage.
So.
We could, we could, we could go up eight inches, four inches, and then about two inches of hot top.
And I'm, hey, so, so, um, but you can take the time to do the long, here I am arguing that we shouldn't spend any money on roads. But the other direction, um, but we do the calculation of which would be more worthwhile to wait till we have enough money to actually do a more, you know, a job. So that we're not just paving over the same road every, every year versus rebuilding. That's something that we've been, been, been doing pretty deep, right? The evaluation of road rebuild versus.
Well, you know, our, our, our current goal is looking for roads in the worst shape.
Yeah.
And those may not go to the top of the list because the traffic level is low on them. But by the same stretch, at a certain point, you're losing your road, you're losing your blacktop. Things like Garnet are a road that we could continue, maybe we could even shim that road. Which would leave like a, like a half inch blacktop, smooth it out again, with a couple areas we may have to dig in and fix properly. Um, you know, it's, so it's, it's this bouncing act of one, what $100,000 get us this year, maybe a couple thousand yards, you know, maybe, maybe a couple thousand feet of road. You know, it may be that ridiculous pavement cost wise, you know, so we have, we, we hit Clark, we got a big chunk of Clark down, but we cut it up into three chunks. I mean, Garnet Road, we could probably do it in three chunks easy, kind of like we did Stoner in three parts as well. So it's always the condition of the road, can we afford it? And, you know, or do we need to go ahead and do a smaller road and continue to build the trust account up to then the tax of the large road? And like what Rick was saying, when we do it, we try to grind down, do the shoulders and get us 10 to 15 years out of the road.
We paved last year. We would have tried to build up the bank account, assuming that paving course would be flat or consistent, but we could make a dent in it.
Now with petroleum prices, we might not pave it.
That's right.
Professor Nelson, who knows plenty of road.
Any chance of having something, any little say input on Lifeford Road where there's a big pothole and you lose your car? That would be expensive.
Yeah, Bill, just, um, you know, we're tapping bottles and you know how it is, if, until somebody brings it to our attention or if I drive over it, um, I'll, I'll, I'll get Eddie on it. Now that we have to clean this snow up, it's supposed to be warm the rest of the week, so we can, we can get some, we can get some patch in there, fill it.
It's been that six weeks.
Okay, I, I didn't know it was there, but I don't think we go up that much, the dirt and whatnot. But Bill, roughly whereabouts is it?
Right off the, uh, rim where it's, uh, under the ground. And there's stones on either side.
Okay, Eddie's aware of it, so he just needs to fill it. Okay, I'll, I'll follow him on that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Uh, before I vote, I'll get to Frank. Before I vote for, for this, would one of the selectmen care to explain clearly to the town that the way we've always done roads is we have one warrant article to appropriate money and that affects the tax rate. We just passed that one, that's number 12. And then we have a second warrant article to spend funds, which reflects how much road maintenance gets done.
That's, that's correct.
So this, this warrant article will not affect your taxes this year, but if we already voted on that.
Just, Frank Fraser, Lifeford Road. Just so everybody knows, as a public service, the Cotton Valley Rail Trail Committee got a grant from the state. And hopefully sometime in the next couple of months, we're gonna, they're gonna pave railroad tracks on Clark Road. It, it looks like it's finally, the money's there. If we just get the paving company out, we'll get it done. So thank you. Just a, quite a clarification. How much, we, we voted to put in 75 grand into the fund. We're about to vote whether we're going to take 100 out. How much is in the fund right now?
The fund's $123,000.
And, and are we adding that 75?
So the 75 will, will not be a top for a total of 200. It'll, it'll drop up to 200,000, leaving the balance at 100. So next year we'll be, we'll plan to shut down. Um, there's a lot of talk, why don't we just do it as an operating budget? And the idea is if we don't pave this year, let's say the price of the land, we can't pay contracts, we would, that money would get rolled right back in. We'd lose that money. Here's at least savings for future projects.
Very good. Any further discussion on this warrant? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Warrant article 13 is adopted. Number 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of not more than $10,000 for professional restoration of Town Record Book Nine. And to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of $3,598.30 from the Records Preservation Capital Reserve Fund. And with a balance of $6,401.70 to be raised by taxation. Brian, I understand you wish to make that motion.
Yes, I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Brian, you wish to discuss the motion?
Uh, just briefly, I wish Craig is here, but, um, our town books are the history, the handles of our, you know, every meeting, they're, they're kept at preserve. And Craig, as our archivist, has been getting these books restored one by one. It's a very costly project, but once it's done, this will last us way, year, hundreds of years. Um, and we really need to preserve these things. And Craig does a good job of getting grant money. There's no grant money available. We've already hit the grants once. Um, but the idea is we're going to draw this trust fund out to zero, fund the rest of the year taxation, and then upcoming, we have three more books left to do. Um, two, uh, three or two, but either way, we, we have a couple more books to do after this one. One of them is very small, should not cost us a lot, and the other's larger, but it's in decent shape. So estimate wise, we should not be getting any bank credit for other two books.
Any discussion on this warrant? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, those say nay. The warrant article number 14 is adopted. Number 15, to see if the town will vote to discontinue the Records Preservation Capital Reserve Fund created in 1997. Said funds are to be expended as noted in warrant article number 14, and any remaining balance to be transferred to the town's operating budget. Brian, you wish to make that as a motion?
I do.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Would you wish to discuss the.
Just briefly, we're, as noted in warrant article 14, we're drawing the money, we're drawing that, that, um, capital reserve fund down to zero. And if we leave it there, it's just cluttering up our numerous capital reserves that we have out there. We're looking to just discontinue it, wipe it off the books. Um, if we want to keep it, we could keep it, but we would need to add funds into it some other way. But right now, I think the remainder of the books can be funded via taxation.
Any further discussion on this warrant?
Yes, I would not. And that is, if we don't make a motion to just, just discontinue the, the fund, it can't go away. So that, that's why I saw the law.
Understood. Understood. Any further discussion on warrant article number 15? Mark?
I really don't understand. And I thought you could not withdraw from the Capital Reserve Fund his second place for this fund created. So just put it in there, operating budget, so it's a need.
We're not doing that. We're, we're using the remaining funds to fund the restoration of the book. That was zero off the account. But those funds are going directly to, to the restoration of the book, which is the intended purpose of that fund.
But you're spending the rest of the fund.
Yes, that's correct.
We already expended the rest of the fund in warrant article number 14, but if there's a few pennies of interest, this enables us to transfer them to the operating budget and clean up the operating accounts of the town to make it like easier for it.
I see, I understand. But everybody, you are spending the money on.
That was the previous warrant.
Yeah. Okay, so there is some money left in the fund.
There should be virtually no money left in the account, but you know how bank accounts are, sometimes you depend on that to clean up the books. Over here.
Hey, I'm not sure if we go back to 14, but the number that's in 14 is not Dallas at the end of the year.
Uh, the town certainly could vote to reconsider warrant article number 14. And if you wish to take that out, we will take that out after we're done with warrant article number 15. Is there any further discussion on warrant article number 15? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Warrant article number 15 passes. Before I move on to the selectmen, I'd like to check the math and tell me if there's a discrepancy.
The numbers we were using were from last year's numbers. So already, if you, if you were showing interest in there or some capital gains, we didn't have that number. That's why we put in, the wording we put, if there's anything residual, we move it out.
Uh, you're looking at page 52, the county report, and the beginning of the year balance is the 35. Ninety-eight number, there's only $695 in there right now.
Would the treasurer like to speak to that?
Yes, please.
No, I can't speak for the trust funds, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there a trust, Steve, trust funds here?
Yeah, he was speaking.
So Mary Lou? Can I ask Mary Lou a question?
You can ask Mary Lou anything you'd like.
Mary Lou?
She may not answer.
Um, do you, in your prior restoration, do you remember us, did you have to cut a $3,000 check this, up this past year for the last restoration?
Uh, I didn't hear any, what's the details? Hold on, let's go back to last year's whatever.
Did we have to vote to pause it down and take it from the board? We wanted to pause it down on the board.
We did, but not for the book that he's talking about now. We've done three books in the last three years, so.
Last year, we pulled 3,000 to start the process, so Craig could get a quote.
That was for last year's book. We haven't produced, we haven't written any money for whatever we would do in 2022.
Let me check that if we reconsider article number 14 and amend it to, uh, and that's after article number 15, which we just adopted, all the balance of the trust fund will then have been put into the general fund for taxes. If we then fund book number nine entirely out of taxes, we will end up with the same result, whatever the balance is in the trust fund.
Correct.
Would you like to make a motion when you consider article number 14?
I haven't been writing, obviously, I'm just, I'm just taking the number and I say.
That, that, this is not an amendment, the motion's to reconsider, if not amend. Amendment would be different. You can simply move that we reconsider article number 14 at this time.
I hope.
Thank you, is there a second? Six. Very good. Is there further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor of reconsidering article number 14, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The, uh, we are now reconsidering article number 14. Would the selectmen like me to recess the meeting for five minutes so that you can write an amended article 14 and then move an amendment?
I did get $3,000.
Mary Lou?
So, yes, sir, I think the $3,000 credit was for last year as well.
If, 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 DRA question, DRA question, if we say pull the total balance from a fund without quantifying it, will DRA let us do that? Okay.
Right? Yeah. All right, we're, we're ready, we gotta run it off.
I'm going to declare that we're in recess for five minutes to allow the selectmen to do it. The, uh, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. We are reconsider, we have reconsidered to reconsider article 14 and the following amendment is being offered by one of the selectmen, I'll tell you which one, an amendment, to raise and appropriate $10,000 for professional restoration of Town Record Book Nine. This article is adopted subsequent to article 15. Would one of you like to make that as a motion? Thank you, bro. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We are now discussing amendments. Does anybody wish to discuss the amendment? Martin?
The money's not in the fund, according to your record.
Any money that is in the fund would have been transferred to the general fund by the warrant article number 15 we just adopted, and now we are just raising the $10,000 from taxes, um, to, uh.
To put into the fund?
To, not to put to the fund, to pay for the restoration.
According to the record at the back, there, $3,000 has already been taken from the fund.
Right.
So why isn't it shown here?
That was why we reconsidered the article, because there's discrepancy in the numbers that our treasurer, the trust funds brought to our attention, and thankfully, he brought it to our attention and not DRA. Over here.
So, Kagan weeks again, so basically, the gist is, we previously authorized spending about $6,400 more dollars, now we may be on the hook for about $9,400.
Yes.
Basically.
But you can't authorize the expenditure of money you don't have in the fund.
That's why you're raising it for taxation and paying for it from the general fund. The, the capital reserve fund was closed by the warrant article we just adopted, number 15, and the money transferred to the general fund.
Yeah.
If you wish to reconsider that, we can do that too, but right now, we're on warrant article number 14. Over here.
Uh, yeah, why didn't that money get, uh, taken out of the $10,000 before, asking for it?
I'll ask you who you are when you stand up, please.
I?
Say your name.
Oh, Suzumaki.
Thank you, sister. So, because we just adopted a warrant article number 15, to take the money, any money in that capital reserve fund, and we're not entirely sure on which money it is, because there seems to be some discussion going on there. Take that money out of the capital reserve fund and put it into the general fund.
And that's become a what, a deficit fund?
Uh, that, once it's put in the general fund, the selectmen can spend it on anything they want to, including what we're discussing right now, which is the professional restoration of this town record book number nine. So we end up being at the same place actually.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion about the amendment? Saying none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Nay. I'm sorry. We are, we are now, uh, deciding whether or not to adopt warrant article number 14 as amended, and I would be glad to give you the floor if you'd like. Would you like the floor?
I think we're good.
We're good, okay. Does anybody else want to discuss this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Okay. That's the amendment number 14. All right, we're now moving on to warrant article number 16. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,000 for the property reevaluation capital reserve fund to deposit this, uh, sub, of sub sum into the property reevaluation capital reserve fund. Rich, you want to make that as a motion?
Yes, I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to discuss it?
I'd like to replace it with wording that we received from DRA, bottom line is the same $7,000. Here's the article away, I'd like to propose it. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,000 to be added to the property reevaluation capital reserve fund. Majority vote acquired, the selectmen recommend this amendment.
Okay, it's not an amendment, that's the motion that's actually being made, uh, because you are allowed to change the wording of warrant articles, other than official warrant articles. And seeing as how I took over reading it, I think it needed to be rewritten anyway, so I, I appreciate that.
Did you get a second?
Yes, I said.
Okay, we have $33,000 in the trust fund, we think we're gonna do a reval in two years, and we're looking at about $40,000, so we're getting close to that number. We'll be able to get a better number next year, uh, when we get the final quota, when it's gonna take the revalue of the town, which will be in 2024. And, uh, we were shooting, to be honest, we were shooting for $40,000, but I think we're gonna be low, so we're getting close. And this is a deposit interbank.
Any further discussion? Saying none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Warrant article 16 is adopted. Number 17, you need to read that one?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you tell us how?
This is, this is the way we're, bottom line's the same, we're using some wording from DRA. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the repair of the windows and to finish the painting with set amount that comes from the townhouse capital reserve fund. Majority vote acquired, the selectmen recommend this amendment.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This was a repeat of an article we had on the ballot. Last year, we never took the money out, so the money never came out of the trust fund. It's still in there. The goal is to get the windows finished this year, got $10,000. We've got a ceiling, the center of the ceiling's done, this is a prime coat on the sides, we, our goal is to finish painting that, and $25,000 is, is to cover that expense.
And we have to vote on it again because the previous authorization expired at the end of the year.
Well, that wasn't clear, but to be clear with everybody, the stuff we're gonna do and put it on the warrant.
There we go. Just started discussion. Over here.
So how much is, oh, Suzumaki, how much is exactly in the capital reserve fund? All righty.
So you wanna go to page 53 of your town report, um, and you have currently in that capital reserve fund.
$39,619.409.
Thank you very much, $39,619.
It's gonna, excuse me, it's gonna take how much more to finish?
Okay, we think we have to finish the floors. We think we have some stenciling to put up, if we can't get it done with the painting quote, that will be part of the $15,000 we have left. We also think there's some grant money available for the restoration of the painting process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Saying none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Warrant article 17 passed. And now move on to the budget.
Seventeen.
Okay, yes, this is 17, I see. Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the selectmen's recommended sum of $1,024,149 to the town operating budget. Said sum does not include special or individual articles addressed in this warrant. Someone want to make that as a motion?
I'm motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like to discuss it?
We're trying to keep our budget in line as much as possible, um, and overall, we're doing a pretty good job, there's a couple of big expenses that'll be gone next year, but with that said, the million, called the million one is where we're at for the upcoming year.
And we have to make a motion to amend the number, Mary Lou didn't give us the number now.
The new number, the new budgetary number for this year is $1,096,149.
Okay. Was this because there was a math error or some such?
That was the $2,000 that were added to the operating budget on warrant articles number nine and 10.
They've raised it.
The raises.
They've raised it.
The year is for the $1,000.
Yes, but this warrant article said it does not include individual articles addressed in the warrant.
It does for that, it doesn't for the book. Don't go there, it's confusing.
It is confusing, that's why I'm asking, because everybody makes that decision. All right.
I, I will make a, can I make, I'll make a comment? In, in the, in the past.
There's too many people talking.
That's separate.
Let me let the selectmen say what they have to say, and that way it's one person at a time.
In the past, we've used a different worksheet or spreadsheet to show various line items. And we tried, it's, it's an Excel spreadsheet we put together, and we tried to move what money, plus and minus, based upon our interpretation of how DRA would categorize the warrant articles. We really have to submit to the state MS 636, that's the town's official budget. So that's the budget that we'd like to talk to going forward, because they, they differentiate whether it's, whether it's, uh, whether it's in the tax base, not in the tax base, how we're gonna get the money. They do all the math for us, we just have to put the warrant articles in here, let them print the form for us, this is, this is our budget going forward. It all has been, but we've been working on that spreadsheet that gets us in trouble. 636 is what we're gonna be using, it's the official budget, it's the official budget.
It doesn't pay to fight the era, I understand. So, I, if you're making a motion, or is Mary Lou making a motion to change it to this number?
I'll make the motion to change it to the 196.
Thank you, and there's a second?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're discussing the amendment. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Amendment is to simply change the number to $1,096,149, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Amendment is adopted. And now discussing the question as amended, are there any further, or any further discussion? Or you, if you wanna say something?
Uh, yes, I'd like, uh, Suzumaki, I have a few questions, uh, directed to the road agent and the, uh, CEO, okay, the question there is double, and, uh, nicked into only eight seven, um, what do you call, he took seven applications, right, five which only were houses, and the other ones were like forges, garage, and now everyone's a salary doubled, okay, and all the way across the board, this, this wife, the secretary, everything, all doubled, and I don't see it, I don't see why, why it needs to be doubled. I mean, seventeen inspections are in here, it's not much, now issuing permits, curtail it, and like you said, only, um, five out of seventeen were actually home, you know, you were talking to forge, a garage, okay.
Is there a response to you?
Well, we, we, we did some ballpark numbers on, on the code enforcement officer. Conservatively, conservatively, we believe he has about 200 interrupts if you will. I have to inspect the gas line for a generator, I have to, someone comes to the office and, and wants to consult about a.
Excuse me?
Excuse me? No, no.
Let him finish, and then I'll let you have another question if you like.
People come to the office, they consult about projects, am I allowed to do it? So we sum up, a, a new house, there's five inspections, that's five interrupts. When we sum up the total number of approximate interrupts, we get 200. So 200 into 10,000 is $50 an interrupt. So here's a person that's got a full-time job of business, he's gonna stop the job, go take the interrupt. We think 50 is, is appropriate.
Well, I don't think, excuse me, but I'm gonna reintroduce, okay? I am majority member of HVAC, and he cannot inspect a generator because he doesn't have any electrical, the only thing he has is a construction license, okay? Uh, we can pay him to take our people at the downtown, just randomly coming in there, says right on, they only buy appointments, sir, okay? Then we have to pay somebody else to answer the phone call, okay, and then to do anything, okay, to touch anything with refrigerant, electrical, water, he has no licensing. So therefore, every new house, we have to hire a master electrician to sign off, a master plumber to sign off, somebody in HVAC sign off that furnace. So, I, no, I don't believe that, you know, taking, um, whatever at town hall is justified and all those interruptions, um, you maybe perhaps we should get somebody that's gonna do it, you know, I often do it for nothing, so I really don't wanna go there, okay? I have friends on reviolations in this town, right in this townhouse, so, no, I don't believe that we deserve to, we need that. You know, if he wants to do business on the side, making recommendations that he can't do legally, that's not on us. No, he cannot go and check on somebody's generator, he does not have a right to touch anything with refrigerant in it, he cannot touch plumbing or electrical.
Order.
Yes, make the agreement. This discussion should be about the my own budget, not personalities.
This discussion should be about the minor budget, not personalities or qualifications.
It isn't about the budget, they doubled it. So it is.
What would be in order is if you wish to amend the budget, to make a, to propose an amendment, which you are well within your rights to do.
Okay, that's it. Sorry, I'm not sure that...
Would you like to propose an amendment?
Yes, I would.
Okay, would you like some time to write it down, or do you have it already?
Well, no, I have it in my head, so, okay, the fifteen thousand dollar appropriation is not, is too much, okay? In twenty-twenty-one, it was only six thousand dollars, and they doubled it. No, I don't feel that he, with seventeen improvements, whatever, you know, yes. I require fifteen.
So we want to help you to do what you want to do.
All right.
But according to the procedure, the major things to happen. If you think that fifteen thousand is too much, why do you think we need one thousand?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
Two thousand and one is twenty-one.
So my understanding is that you were proposing to reduce the budget by seven thousand dollars?
No, point of order.
Yeah.
Mary Lou, I'm trying to tell, the current budget amount for code enforcement is ten thousand dollars, not fifteen. So then you'd only be reducing it by fifteen thousand.
We're just saying, I'm just...
Why is she taking the total to the whole department?
No, you can't.
She, if she wants to propose an amendment, she could propose a direct amendment she likes, and she could write it up for town. Frank and June are sitting next to, so you help her to write down her amendment, so that we can flag it. Who can be willing to?
This whole budget.
Mary Lou, what, eleven thousand, five hundred?
Eighteen.
Eighteen at the top, but this whole budget, it's only eleven thousand, five hundred.
While Sue is getting her thoughts together, is there discussion on any other parts of the budget that people would like to discuss?
The general discussion, today's not the day to do this kind of stuff. The time to do these kind of discussions is while the budget's being created. We're going over a million bucks, we're growing. One of the reasons why the salary is being bumped out is because we expect a whole bunch more houses to be built in the next year or two, and the market economics certainly are headed that way. But we're deciding what town to live in, and people want to build houses, and we do have some lots we can build on. So we're going to reach a point, at some point, where we might, we, the town, might want to consider having a budget committee. Under RSA thirty-two, there's a whole procedure. It takes basically two years to get that going. We would vote on it, if we wanted to do it next year, we would vote on it next year, appoint some members to it, and then they would be impacting the budget two years from now. If we wait another year, that just keeps rolling, you know? So I'm just going to put it out there, if anybody thinks this is a valuable thing to talk about, let's talk about, talk to me during the course of this year, and if so, we would put it as a warrant article next year. But it's getting to the point where we're asking our selectmen to do a lot of financial work, and there are new people coming into town with management experience and financial management experience, let's leverage that. Also, the budget committee doesn't get paid, so, you know, it would leverage some more civic duty to do this. But that's, that's an option, rather than having these kind of discussions here on town meeting day. Because really, the budget, the budget preparation, that's where these kind of discussions should be at.
Understood, but as long as the town operates as a traditional town meeting without a budget committee, then discussing the budget in whatever detail the town wishes to specify is totally in order at this time. So I will not rule this amendment out of order. Although the town is certainly free to vote it down if they so decide, if they want to. Who do you want to go?
I want to go.
Okay, so that's, that's, so, want me to help you with the wording?
Yep.
So Ms. Marquis is proposing an amendment to line item forty-two, forty, dash, one hundred, which is the salary to the CEO of the building inspector, to drop that from the current proposed ten thousand to a new number of eight thousand, which reduces it by two thousand dollars.
Excuse me, we're using the six thirty-six, so what line item on the six thirty-six are you talking about? Six thirty-six.
Oh, she's looking at the budget.
That's the worksheet.
The only figure that the town votes on is the bottom line. So I'm looking in the budget in the book, it's the same thing, it's line for inspection.
The yellow attachment.
In the MSA? So it's in the MS six thirty-six?
Correct, that's what they're asking. While they're getting thoughts together, is there any discussion on any other topics in the budget that people would like to discuss? Over here.
Mark Stengel, Robert Wright, would like to back up a little bit during the Republican meeting, having the budget and warrant articles. This subject was brought up. These five people in the audience all agree that it should be adjusted, and it was recommended that it be adjusted eight thousand dollars, which I questioned the following selectmen's meeting, which basically I got, you know, it's not going anywhere, we're going to keep it attached. So, you know, my personal feeling is that Nick Angel is too busy, give him more money, it's not going to make him do the, their take here at the whole before. He needs extra help. And I know we talked to a couple of people that, like, have the administrative assistant, she does a lot of work for him. I've not heard of her job.
Not bring up individuals names in the discussion, in the graphic discussions, through the question.
Uh, this is the budget. On this topic, I've dropped ten thousand down to eight, and it was brought up during the Republican meeting, and it wasn't held. So here they are in...
Would you like to help us to prepare their amendment?
I think Frank's over there.
That would be, over here.
I think it's moved away, I don't know if this is how we move it along, but on the yellow sheet here.
Yes.
That went down to first page, forty-two, forty, forty-two, forty-nine, shows the budget in the latter part.
Mr. Moderator, there's too many people talking.
Corresponds to the three lines in here.
Yep. I can't hear the words that are being said right now, so I'm going to ask, but you guys have finished arguing, prepare this one, then you repeat yourselves, so I know what you're saying.
Sure. On page eighteen here, the session is around six thousand versus ten thousand, and then into eight. There are three lines in here, the total, on the yellow page here, the six thirty-six, the total of eleven five hundred on here. So that is what we have to amend, not the ten thousand over here.
That sounds like an excellent way to accomplish what they're discussing over here. You guys are very ready.
I'm ready again, now that I know what's right here. All right, so Ms. Marquis is making an amendment on the MS six thirty-six, note, I align thirty-two, thirty, building permits. The proposed, the proposed budget is fifteen thousand dollars, she'd like to drop that to eight, decreasing it by seven thousand dollars.
No, 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 no. Yes, yeah, yes.
Is that a revenue line?
That's a revenue line.
Well, you know, this is my...
It's every time, all of you, all of you, it's, it's, everything that the department directed.
Well, I think what I'm going to do, because I can't hear them throwing up, while people are arguing in the room, is I'm going to declare a five-minute recess, and allow them to decide what they're doing, and then we resume this discussion. Okay, let's come back into town meeting, and so would you like to make your amendment?
I'd like to make amendment on behalf of Ms. Marquis, and I think there are other people who would like to do so. On the MS six thirty-six, on the appropriation line, excuse me, I was doing the revenue before, my mistake, in on line forty-two, forty, dash, four-two, four-nine, building inspection, we would like to reduce the current proposed amount of eleven thousand, five hundred to nine thousand, five hundred, effectively decreasing it by two thousand dollars.
And you got that in writing, it looks like, so that we won't...
I have not put it in writing yet, if I am, like, should paper ever put it in writing?
You will go material, okay. Is there a second to that amendment? Thank you, Mr. Stengel. We are now discussing this amendment to the budget, to reduce the budget by two thousand dollars in the line, the appropriate line for the code enforcement. Is there any further discussion? Doesn't look like it. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The amendment fits. I would still ask you to have for the minutes of the meeting. We are now back to the budget as originally amended for one million, ninety-six thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Is there any further discussion on the budget? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
The budget is adopted. Regarding Mr. Frager's statement about a budget committee, that should be proposed as a warrant article next year by the selectmen, or it could be proposed by decision by twenty-five registered voters in the town. And the procedure of that is, I think, known to a number of people in the room. Or if you have any questions, you can ask me, it's not a difficult question.
Moderator?
Yes.
I have an interesting question.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Phil Nelson, like it rode. I'm curious as to why all the equipment is in back of this building? Looks crappy. It looks like a, I don't know what. We have a garage over there, why isn't it parked over there? I can see one or two trucks, but, I don't know, it's like a used truck lot or something.
Would the selectmen like to respond to that question?
It's ongoing battle, and I agree that a lot of the trucks need to go, certain ones need to be plugged in, ready for plowing, ready for room service, but there's a handful that's not happy with it, that have gone. So, once the snow's gone, I'm going to, we will plan on addressing that with Eddie. It was not just dac cleaning up, there's also just general cleaning up back there. So trucks and trash need to be hauled out of there. But certain trucks, actually, they need to be plugged in, need to be road ready, but there's a handful back there that are not roadworthy, so they need to go. So we will address that once the snow goes.
Over here, Mr. Stengel.
Mark Stengel, Robert Wright, did you look in the town ordinance? There are no junkyards allowed in Brookfield. According to RSA, state RSA, that does qualify as a junkyard. I brought it to the selectmen's attention, I brought it to the CEO's attention, and no response. So I guess it's okay, granted, continue to have an illegal junkyard here. Many people brought it up in the past, and blind eye goes to it, and what can I say? Now, the rest of you know, if you want to check the records, check the ordinance, check the RSAs, we see one of them. It is an illegal junkyard right now.
Again, this could be an issue where you could bring a petition warrant article before the town meeting next year. That would be one of our great, we are presuming.
You shouldn't have to do that.
Mr. Frager.
Dick Tagg, hi. Where do I go? Seven, I'm in pride. I would like the selectmen and the Heritage Commission for the restoration of this beautiful building, and looking forward to seeing it completed with a new windows. It's great, I think, having stood in Bill's place for ten years, I think the acoustics have improved.
Yes.
I would agree the acoustics have improved, unfortunately, my ears have not. Is there any further business that people wish to bring before the town meeting at this time? Over here, Frank.
Unless something else is planned, this is Virginia's last meeting, and we need to do something else. Virginia, for all of you, last meeting.
It has been a pleasure working with you in the last several years, Richard. Is there any other business to come before the town meeting? I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege here, I'm going to thank the town of Brookfield. It has been an honor serving as your moderator for the last twelve years, I have enjoyed it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
In that being, you're a step ahead here, Frank. We have three major figureheads stepping down from the town. Not stepping away, but stepping down from their official spots. As Dr. Marquis said, he's been moderator since I've been here, and he's done a phenomenal job keeping us in order, which sometimes is not easy. Virginia, she's been here since, she's been working this back office over here, and that's...
My house.
Your house, yes. And Mary Lou, who has been the cornerstone for the selectmen to lean on, the town to lean on, and keep us in check, and not, you know, a lot of DRA, as we carry. We thank you for your time as well, and for each of you, we have a computer plate made for everyone, gave, and our thanks as a town to all three of you again. You are, you know, the salt of the earth people that keep our small town small, keep us in check, and while we all may not be the happy bunch, we all get along, and we're a great little town, and you guys have helped to keep it that way, so we thank you. The town thanks you.
I want my whole class to be pumped because I was just leaving.
Mary Lou? This is free.
Thank you, Rick.
You can read the inscription on the bill, you need to deny, my eyes are not.
Presented by the residents of the town of Brookfield, New Hampshire, for William M. Marsh, M.D., in recognition of his many years of dedicated service as Brookfield Town Moderator and Help Up Sir, Town Meeting, March twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you all. And that, I declare this town meeting adjourned.